Want to call to order the special city council meeting of Wednesday, July 31st. Please rise for the pledge.
I would like to lead this flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored the Texas flag. Our pledge to lead Texas. One state, under God, one indivisible.
No, nobody signed up for public comments? Thank you. Item 2.0, hotel occupancy tax allocations. 2.1, discussion and presentation of applicants, applications seeking hotel occupancy tax funds for fiscal year 2024-25. In accordance with Chapter 351 of the Texas Tax Code, presentations of the applicants will be limited to one representative per application and limited to three minutes. Questions and/or comments by council members do not count toward the three-minute time limit.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We've got a quick presentation just to kind of go over what our hotel occupancy tax is, or, and what constitutes for an event that qualifies for hot sponsorship funding, and then also looking back a little bit as well as what these events have received in the past and what they've requested for this year, and then what staff recommends for them to receive. So, under the Texas Tax Code, we collect 7% of the paid price of a hotel room. This includes bed and breakfast businesses and short-term rentals. And the city must report these taxes and separate the revenue and expenditures from the general fund. These funds are regulated and may only be used in certain ways. So there's basically a two-list checklist that we have to go through for hot funding. So every expenditure has to directly enhance and promote tourism and the convention and hotel industry, and every expenditure must clearly fit into one of nine categories that they set forth for us, and we'll go over those in just a minute. So enhancing and promoting tourism in the hotel industry. Tourism is defined as guiding and managing individuals who are traveling to a different city, county, state, or country, and a direct promotion of the convention and hotel industry has been consistently interpreted by the Texas Attorney General as a program, event, personnel, or a facility likely to cause increased hotel and convention activity. So, basically what that means is, we want to bring people into Seabrook that don't necessarily live here, and we want to put heads in beds. We want them to, to stay in our city, because, I mean, it's a great city, right? So, the nine hot categories, this is what is provided to us as far as being able to meet certain requirements. So, the funding is an establishment, improvement, or maintenance of a convention center or visitor center. It's paying the administrative cost for facilitating convention registration, paying for advertising, solicitations, and promotions that attract tourists and convention delegates to the city, expenditures that promote the arts, funding historical or preservation programs, funding certain expenses, including promotional expenses directly related to a sporting event within counties with a population under 1 million, funding the enhancement or, excuse me, or upgrading of existing sports facilities or sports fields, funding transportation systems for tourists, and signage directing tourists to sites and attractions that are visited frequently by hotel guests in the municipality. So this is kind of our hot fund overview, looking ahead to fiscal year 25. The forecasted revenue is $566,263. Our top expense here is going to be personnel, and then following shortly after that is our event, our event sponsorship request at $155,500. Celebration Seabrook also provides support out of this budget as well at $45,000, and at this time, we're looking at a revenue versus expenditures difference of $16,000 to the positive. So this is a list of the events that have submitted hot funding application requests for this coming fiscal year. You'll recognize almost all of them, and then you'll also see a new one at the bottom, a fall concert series and fundraising event for Barge 295. There are applications not included in tonight's agenda and will be discussed at a future meeting, but I have spoken with them to be able to include their information in this presentation tonight. So, the Bay Area Houston Ballet and Theater, they are requesting $3,000. It is a $1,500 addition from what they received last year, and as you can see at the bottom here, they do receive additional funding totaling $170,000 from additional municipalities and other sponsorships as well. Kills and Wheels is another event that you are familiar with, and they've requested $37,500, which is the same that they were approved for last year. Seabrook Lucky Trails, we actually have two representatives from them here today. You all are very familiar with Robbie, but we have some new faces. I do want to invite them up just in case they want to say anything about their event, or if you guys have any questions that you want to ask them, perhaps there's changes, you know, with management, sometimes there's changes, but they're requesting $35,000, which is a $2,500 decrease from what was given to them last year. Would you guys like to come and say anything about your event?
Yes. Should I go, or?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hello, Council. My name is William Fromo. I am co-founder of Three Bros Running Company. My brother's over there, he's part of the other three bros. So, our concept is we want to bring big city races to cities across Texas. We have been mentored by Robbie to start our own running event company, and he has given us the reins to continue Lucky Trails. One of our high keys is we want to bring people to not only do the race, but also to visit the city afterwards. So if you'll see, like, our previous races, we have, like, highlights of where to stay, things to do, where to eat, and we actually visit these places and create content specific to these places we visit. So, we really want people to visit the city. I noticed from last year, you guys hit record numbers, I think 1,600. I'm not sure how many different cities, I think it's like 152 different cities, 26 different states, but we want to increase those numbers. Hopefully, I think with our marketing and our new branding that we're going to be applying to this, we are hoping to get at least 2,000 people. And that's not just 2,000 runners. All runners comes with family, and those families spend money, and it's a three-day event, so we're encouraging people to stay. We have contacted all the hotels, and we're going to be applying the same thing Robbie did last year, is we're going to give incentives to people who do stay. If they send us, like, the receipts to the hotels they're staying here in Seabrook, we're going to give them, I think it's like $5 or $10 off, but we're going to be continuing that process. So my hope with Lucky Trails is we want to keep the same standard that Robbie did with his races, and either want to keep the same, or we want to improve. So we have things that we're going to improve by adding a lot more Seabrook into our website and really focusing on that. So, thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to be here, and excited to be working with you guys.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Excuse me again. So moving forward, we have the Seabrook Saltwater Derby, another event that you all are very familiar with. Now, they have asked for $10,000 this year, which is up 2,500 from last year. However, they are going to have a two-day event for their next, for their next event. So, that's really exciting. I feel like multiple-day events do help entice folks to want to stay overnight whenever they've got to get up and go back the next morning. So, that's a good positive. Texas Outlaw Challenge, they've requested $30,000, which is exactly what they were approved for this past fiscal year as well. They're receiving some additional funding from KIMA and Nassau Bay totaling $40,000 as well. And this is the new event. It is a series, and I don't have all of the information yet, but we'll be getting that by the end of this week, hopefully. They are requesting $40,000, and we should have that application from them hopefully by Friday with additional information as far as their dates and additional attachments. So this just kind of goes all the way back to fiscal year 2018, where we can just see where, where these events have fallen, what they've requested, what they've received, and then, of course, what's new there at the bottom. So the total this year for the requested amount is $155,500, which is up from last year. That's due to having a new event. We do have a few events that chose not to apply for hot sponsorship funding this year. Bay Access Sailing, JFest Southwest chose not to apply for hot funding this year. We had been in communication with them. Hopefully, they would like to apply again in future years. And then you can also see what is recommended by staff, and we've recommended what's been requested. Our budget does allow for that, so we didn't have to go back and make any cuts or recommend less than what was requested by the event host this year. And this just looks at, again, in a larger format, what staff's recommendations are versus what was allocated to them for the 2024 fiscal year, and then what they requested for this year. So sponsorship compliance, this is what we use essentially to hold our fund recipients accountable. So they submit and receive a special event permit or a request, or request and receive a waiver for that permit, so that way we also are following our special event ordinance. They maintain an event or program website that identifies Seabrook as a sponsor, and then links to our website as well for more information. They list all of the Seabrook lodging facilities, so all of our hotels, motels, bed and breakfast, on that website as well, and they also have to notify all of our lodging facilities of their event. And then after their event concludes, they come back to city council, they tell you guys all about it, and give you a nice presentation, and show off kind of what those funds were used for, and then they submit an invoice for 75% of the funds upfront, and then the other 25% after they give that presentation. Does anybody have any questions about our staff's recommendations or the events?
Questions? Rob?
Yeah, just one. How many of these entities that we've supported over the years are for-profit? You, you may not know the answer to that. I know it's kind of out of the blue. I see most of them are 501(c)(3)'s and (c)(7)'s.
I don't have an answer for you for that. I can try to find out. It's not a question that we ask on their application process.
Thank you.
I'd just like to know, okay, what was the situation with the barge, and why it's not in this presentation tonight?
So, they didn't get their application in by the deadline that we had initially set for it. I was not aware of that, unfortunately, so today, whenever we found out, we reached out to them and got the information, and then also reactivated that application so they could come back and submit it.
Okay, just to clarify, I think they weren't told about it like they, the other people were, just for the record. And that's, that's in an email. Because Gail, or whoever, I guess you guys reached out to all of the previous applicants, and they had mentioned this since April, that they were wanting to reply for this. So they missed that because they weren't, there was no communication there. But I think, don't you think it'd be best if we approved these all together, the same, same night, and maybe postpone this? All the hot funds, if we can't approve all of them, let's just wait until we can do it all together.
I'm not sure that that's a question that I can answer, Council.
So we didn't, I guess my question is, did we, we did not get anything from them until when?
So we spoke to them today, and whenever we initially put out the hot applications, we simply followed what had been done in years past. So I didn't have a, a large extensive contact list of events that hoped to be contacted for future application processes. I've created one, so I'll have a database for next year. So whenever we posted it on the website, it was on a specific webpage, and so one that they, I guess, were not aware to go look at at that time.
Well, I guess, I mean, this is somewhat new to me, too. I didn't know they were having a concert series. So I'm, when, when did they decide to have a concert series? Do we know that?
I'm not sure.
Does anybody know that? You know that?
Somebody here from the barge?
You know about this concert series they're talking about?
No, I don't. They emailed me today just about the application. I don't, I don't think this was anything that was in the queue for a special event permit.
It was not, no.
Okay, all right, so.
I'm just saying, I think we should, we should vote all together on all of it, not just put one to the end and come back to next time. Why can't we just approve all of these next meeting?
Why do you have to, why do you have to wait to approve it? Why can't we just approve them all now?
I'd like to know what the series is. I mean, this is all new. I know the others are, I mean, they made their presentations. I think if somebody wants 40 grand from the city, they could have someone here to tell us what it's about. That's just, I mean...
Yeah, I agree, because, I mean, especially when they're asking for 40,000 in our biggest event. I mean, Kills and Wheels, and they're only at 37, so I'd like to know what it is as well.
Well, I knew that they were wanting to apply, and I saw that they weren't on the application, and I asked the owner today, "Did you not apply for hot funds?" And he said, "I didn't know it was happening." So they, he didn't know. And there's emails back and forth from Gail and him talking about it since April. So, that should have been on the city's staff's, you know, radar to contact them, like they did, gave the other people a chance that apply every year, in my opinion.
But he's been here since 2017, and has never applied for it before, and all I'm asking is a definition of what the, the concert series is.
I agree, but they didn't have an opportunity to, to submit it. You know, the, the website was changing also during the last few months.
Well, why can't we vote on the others tonight, since we know what they're about, and then the barge can come forward with their presentation as to what it's about?
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't think, you know, this, this large of an ask is, is something we can just vote on without knowing what it is. It's, whether, regardless of who dropped the ball or what, I can't, I can't say that I would give anybody forty, anybody 40 grand, not knowing what their event is about.
Sure.
I'm not seeing, I'm not...
But I mean, why, if we're going to divvy up all the funds...
Series, and I'm not sure, you know, even concerts are, are allowed on that site. So, I need to, we, we need to, we need to discuss this further, and, and I don't think I'm ready to, to make a decision tonight. I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with sitting down and them coming back and telling us what it's about, and we vote to give them 40 grand if that's what they're still going to ask for. But, but tonight, I'm not seeing what, what a fall concert series is about.
I can agree with not voting on something when we don't have all the information, but if we don't have all the information out of all of this, to divvy up some of the funds, why don't we just do it all at the same time, is what I'm saying.
So, we want to postpone this for everybody?
I would like to, till the next meeting, or whenever you can.
Make a motion.
A motion to table until the next regular council meeting that we can do this on.
I'll second that.
Amanda, if our next council meeting is on the 20th, at what point would you have to have all the information from the barge and able to, in order to be able to present something that explains what it is? And right now, the special event permits and all that kind of stuff, how will those be used? All of that cohesive thing for what they're trying to do there. At what point do you need the information so you could get it together?
I'll defer to Rachel on that. I believe the deadline for including information into the agenda is, is it the week prior to?
August 12th at noon.
Okay, August 12th at noon. Thank you for that. And so like I said, I do anticipate to have their completed application by the end of the week. The event holder has my cell phone number as well. I've asked him to reach out if he does have questions, filling that out. It's not a presentation that we do require from them, just to kind of put that into perspective. It's just they fill out the form online that kind of goes into the details of their event with how much they're requesting and what their anticipated impact is to the city of Seabrook and our hotels.
I, I don't see any benefit of tabling this and delaying for the other folks so they can go ahead and start planning their events.
Agree.
Not an overnight deal.
We have some...
These events are next year.
Yeah, and so, let's just get the ones we've got.
Yeah.
The barge can come forward with the second, their, their second one, and we'll go from there.
Agree.
Agree.
We have a motion and a second to postpone. All in favor of postponing? All opposed? Okay.
I move to approve the hot tax incentives for all those that presented, excluding Barge 295.
Second.
Your name?
They're each items on the...
Oh, they're each item?
Yeah, they're each items that they're...
And before we do that, I'm sorry, can we discuss some questions on the hot fund itself?
Yeah.
Okay. For instance, I asked Gail late today, but I'm confused on the salary of, I know there's three, 2.5 people, you said, Gail, that were...
Actually, Councilor Rascal, if we can postpone that, so when we go into the proposed budget, your proposed budget, your general fund, your enterprise fund, and your special fund, so we can get into the detail of each one of those funds.
Okay, that's fine.
Before we start making motions on the current layout of hot funds, the issue remains of the, the hotel signage that's come up more than once. I'm not, what I don't want to do is approve something tonight that would deny us the opportunity in the future to support the signage program on the highway, or to support Kills and Wheels if that comes through, or support the barge if that comes through as a valid application.
No, that's a great, a great question and a great concern. So the, the items on the agenda tonight that are being approved is just for the event funding, the event sponsorship funding. It's not for the entire budget.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you, Rob.
Anybody else?
I was going to get there, but...
2.2, consider and take all appropriate action on a request from Bay Area Houston Ballet and Theater for hotel occupancy tax funds in the amount of $3,000 for fiscal year 2024-25 to include a schedule for releasing funds to the applicants if approved.
Move approved 2.2.
Second.
Any discussion on the ballet? All in favor? It's approved. 2.3, consider and take all appropriate action on a request from Kills and Wheels, Concorde de Elegance, for hotel occupancy tax funds in the amount of $37,500 for fiscal year 2024-25 to include a schedule for releasing funds to the applicant if approved.
Move approved 2.3. Hold on, I'd like to make a note.
Go ahead.
I personally think that's our signature event, and I know we dropped their funding last year just because of budget, but I would like to try to get that pushed up a little bit more if I could, just because that is something that put heads in beds, and the hotels have said that. It's, you know, that's just my personal opinion, because, you know, that is our signature event in Seabrook. So I, you know, I'd like to see it go up a little bit, but I'm, if they're okay with it, I'm okay with it, too, but I just, that's just, I just wanted to make that record.
Well, they, they requested 37.5, so...
That's what they requested.
And there's a motion on the floor.
All right, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously. 2.4, consider and take all appropriate action on a request of Texas Outlaw Challenge for hotel occupancy tax funds in the amount of $30,000 for fiscal year 2024-25 to include a schedule for releasing funds to the applicant if approved. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve, which one is that, 2.2?
Second.
Can you go back to the slide that shows who else is funding that?
No, no, for them specifically, what other cities.
Yeah, there was something beyond, yeah.
Yeah, that one.
That one.
See, I mean, why do we, why are we the top contributor? I feel like a lot of that stuff goes on at KIMA. Where to go?
There it is.
No, they had, they had a lot in Seabrook this year.
Okay.
I, I kind of feel like they contribute to everything around the lake with the races going up the middle of the lake. There's people watching it. If you've been out there on the water, there's people all the way up both sides of the water watching it. So it doesn't just benefit Seabrook. It benefits Nassau Bay and all, everybody, all seven cities that, that peg on to the lake. It's just their primary events are located here in Seabrook, which I kind of like to see.
Okay, I mean, I agree, but again, going back to the two-part test, they do not put heads in beds. I've heard from a lot of the hotels, and they can't tell me that they get anything from this. So that's my biggest thing. I know they use gas and do all this other stuff. I understand that, but it...
But if they have 2,000 to 3,000 visitors, if they have 2,000, 2,000 to 3,000 people attending the event, we're not putting heads in beds in Seabrook. I understand that perspective. Where are they going? And is it the, the event that's not putting heads in beds, or is it our hotels that aren't attracting the people from this event?
And I have seen trailers and boats in some of these hotels.
Yeah, me, too.
I just don't think they're reporting them.
Maybe, that could be the...
But they have nice parking lots, and they need, need larger areas. So I have seen those. And I was lucky to get this project through this year because of the flood, but it did come off, frankly. come off, frankly.
Okay, just wanted to make a note.
Okay, we have a motion. Any more discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Two point five. Consider and take all appropriate action of a request from Seabrook Lucky Trails for Hotel Occupancy Tax Funds in the amount of thirty-five thousand for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five to include a schedule for releasing funds to the applicant if approved.
Make a motion to approve two point five.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously. Two point six. Consider and take all appropriate action of a request from Seabrook Saltwater Derby for Hotel Occupancy Tax Funds in the amount of ten thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five to include a schedule for releasing funds to the applicant if approved.
Move to approve two point six.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's approved. Three point O. Adjourn to regular session and enter into workshop session three point one. Review and discuss fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five city Seabrook operations, special funds, capital improvement program, and/or any existing or future debt service. Consider and take all appropriate action on a proposed tax rate and schedule future work sessions if applicable. Gail?
Mayor and Council, thank you. Before you tonight, as per the charter, you have a now general fund, enterprise fund that is balanced. Per our previous workshop, we discussed going into some of our special funds that we had not tapped on, and we were able to go ahead and balance the budget based on those recommendations. So I'll walk through the highlights. You have a hard copy before you. We will talk about some of the challenges that we've had over the last week in getting this to you properly and what that entailed. And then we've also, just before this meeting, put it on electronically if anybody would like to go back and look that with our agenda as well. So with that, the highlights that we'll be going over is the Harris County tax rule and updates to the values. We'll touch on the truth in taxation calculation again and look at the discussion of setting a potential tax rate for fiscal year twenty-five, what the general fund changes were after our last workshop, touch on the proposed and almost final CIP, and then wrap up with the final steps.
Before we get started, can I ask a question? Did the county get back with us with the correction of the problem that we had with tax rules?
They did not, and Mike, I guess, would you like to answer their last comment?
Would you like to?
No, you wouldn't, but you will. Since you just got back from the Caribbean, I see.
I did. Wonderful. So, yes, I've been in constant communication, or at least reaching out to Harris County to try and get an updated number. The last response that I received was that they took my advice that we thought it was the warehouse or an industrial section in the port area, and they do think that that is where the problem lies in there. They said it was a complicated calculation to parcel out what improvements were the cities and what improvements were outside of the cities. With that being said, you know, the recommendation was either A, to inform council, we don't have an actual certified estimated tax rule, or two, to perform the calculation, removing the entire seven hundred million that is represented in that figure, which is what I did, although I did also request that they, in the past, when some of the errors have shown up on the roll, it's not only in one spot, so I was asking them to give us some type of assurances that the numbers are good. And they said it would be Monday or possibly Friday or Monday before they could give me those numbers. I'll answer any other question.
Mike, to make sure I understand, the Harris County Appraisal District assigned to the city of Seabrook some property that doesn't actually belong to us and artificially inflated our tax base. And until they correct it, you can't really make sense of what it all is.
That, yeah, in a nutshell, that is correct. I mean, this is a parcel that's what they call a split, it's in a split jurisdiction, meaning that it's in our taxing authority along with two other taxing authorities, and it's been a problem, not just this one, but there are others in our jurisdiction that have been problems in the past where the appraisal district has to go in and parcel that out. It's not something that I can do, or, I mean, I don't have the information. It's how they assess those properties, and they say, well, this is in Seabrook and this is in the other cities or taxing entities. So, yes, essentially, the error is that it is represented in our figures, therefore, when I perform the no new revenue rate calculation, you've got some erroneous numbers in there. So, again, the recommendation was to push it off altogether or to just remove the seven hundred million as if it's not part of the equation, so.
But a portion of that is taxable for the city of Seabrook?
If it is the property that I think it is, it is taxable. However, there is an industrial district agreement with that entity, if that is the property that contains that, so.
Well, this happened in Pearland, and it was a huge loss.
Yes, and I certainly don't recommend that we go down that path.
Right, okay. Me neither. All right, thanks, Mike. That, I understand. Appreciate it. Okay, Gail, thank you.
Thank you. So, again, the slide that we put up, just as for illustrative purposes only, these are two that we know that cross those jurisdictional lines on one parcel, so, again, we believe it's probably these two, it could be additional, but these are the two that we looked at on the H-CAD rolls. So as Mike discussed, he's taken his best information that he has available to him with the manual extraction of the seven hundred million dollars in new values, along with the normal protest backing that out to get the total taxable value. And tonight, for the proposed budget and for our discussion on the tax rate, that is what we have currently in there. So as we discussed also in the last workshop, this is our little one oh one on your M and O rate, and then the second part of that is your interest or your debt service. And so, the thirty-five cents and the fourteen cents equate to forty-nine cents, which is the no new revenue tax rate that we're coming up with at this time. So currently, our rate is forty-five or point four five five, four five, seven seven five five. This would equate currently with our estimates to four nine eight six two five. We discussed with the last workshop, again, these funds over to your right, stabilization fund, the port fund, and some prior year funds, so I'll walk you through what changes that we've made since our last discussion. We did go in and find quite a few expenses in a second pass that we could reduce it along with these revenue adjustments. So from the first pass, there was quite a bit of discussion on expenditure we had in for scanning that has been removed at this time. We went back and looked at, for audit purposes, we have to get exactly from October one to September thirtieth. However, our payrolls do not line up, so there's some accounting and journal entries they have to make. We found that if we did that down to the penny, we could adjust and get quite a bit off. That ended up being eighty-five. I did have in the admin budget, a city hall renovation architectural, and that was leading into our discussion with a possible new police station, and there was going to be some movement until we get some confirmation from council on that, that's been removed. Our legal fees are still trending down, so we've reduced that by twenty. Our Seabrook Volunteer Fire Department contract, we've recalculated the new debt payments going in and through fiscal year twenty-five and found additional fifteen thousand savings. And we also had in the previous draft budget, a Christmas decor rental program, and we've decided that we've got funds in the current budget to do an outright purchase, so we're able to cut sixteen there. All in with the cuts, we're at a little over three hundred thousand. With that, I discussed the importance, I believed, of trying to include a cost of living adjustment for employees, and so that is in the proposed budget with some of the cuts that we've made, and that is that at three percent, equating to just over two hundred and sixty thousand. The revenue adjustments, we went back and looked at our revenue as well to see if there was any adjustments. We discussed in the perfect world what we think, which is, we believe we have new single-family residential starts that are around probably eighteen to twenty-one million. So we've adjusted and put in seventy-five thousand dollars, which is what would equate off of that into the ad valorem revenue line item. We also, without the pool being open, realized that we're still recognizing pool and park fees, so we've reduced that down. And then we've also looked at our impressive interest rates, and that forecast is trending up, so we were able to adjust to the positive in the interest revenue. Moving on to the special revenue funds, prior use funds are something that we typically, if we've got something that's not been expensed in the current fiscal year that we're in, but it's been approved here, we need to account for it moving forward. So we talked about our CAD software. This is what League City's working on that we still don't have yet, so we've moved this twice before, and we're still not ready. The software is not ready, so this would be moving forward, that money for that software. The architectural fee proposal was also approved in this fiscal year, but we will not be spending that out probably before September thirtieth. And then a new topic tonight I would like to, see if council would like to leave on, is the community house renovation. So we failed to discuss that at our last workshop, and that is now in your proposed budget and in your proposed CIP, and we'll get into that in just a moment. Stabilization funds were the eight hundred thousand that we have set aside for any type of loss in our revenues that we could equate from the highway project, and as we're coming to a close, we've been fortunate not to have any of those dips, but we are this year with no new commercial starts and no significant single-family starts being able to make up that difference. So with that recommendation last time, we've gone back through the budget and picked out some one-time expenses. Those are proposed as coming from IT department as hardware items of seventy-three, four-ten. If there is an additional election, twenty-three thousand, nine twenty-five. HOA decorative street sign program, this is one we also did not talk about at the last meeting, but Mystic Village, we put this together, if you remember, some time back, and council approved it, and it's a match program, so it's a fifty-fifty decorative sign. Mystic Village took advantage of that. We've got it publicized on our website and plan to reach out to the other HOAs to see if that they wanted to. This is not necessarily a gotta-haves, but we would like to see if we keep this in the stabilization fund, then if it is utilized, we've got funds to be able to keep that program going. Two park mowers, this one I actually should have struck. We're going to go ahead and purchase those out of the current fiscal year, so there's not a need there. And then special legal, we usually budget for, if we have anything that is not going to be covered under our city attorney, and it's special counsel, so that would be hopefully not needed, but we could pull that as well as a one-time expense from stabilization. Lastly, looking back over the budget, we have the one point six million that we've talked about that's committed, and we did go ahead and kick off the sound study on the ambient noise, and then there's a second part to that after the rail goes live, and this is, has to do with the rail spur on the north side of town that the Port of Houston is building. The one point six came from a settlement to initially build a wall. The settlement agreement was amended, and turned around and cashed out and sent that to the city, but there could still be a need for building that wall. However, there would, a need to also do some sound studies at looking at that pre and then post once the rail goes live. We're still anticipating, it'll probably be at the beginning of next year, that we'll start to see some activity on that rail line. And I'll stop there if there's any questions before I just go into some of the sheets in your book.
Yeah, I have one. So when you were talking about the cost of living raise or whatever, is that an additional to the two point five they get? So that would be a five point five?
Correct. So there's a step program that's dependent on when their anniversary date is, so if someone has, you know, April, that would be halfway through their fiscal year, so they wouldn't get their step until April. Everybody's anniversary date falls differently, and so they were on the civilian side, it's a two point five percent step on their anniversary. On the civil service side, for PD, it's a three percent on their anniversary date. So this would be, a COLA is applied to their current pay at the beginning of the fiscal year, so that three percent would kick in in October, and then they wouldn't get two or half or three percent until whenever their anniversary date is, and it varies.
Okay, so I'm all for anybody getting a raise, but I guess with the economy the way it is, and there's companies out there that aren't giving raises, or they're just freezing theirs until the economy gets better, or this election happens and they see what's going to happen?
Part of, and let me explain part of the reasoning of this. I get together with all of the cities in the area, and we obviously go through our anticipated COLAs and pay increases because we are extremely competitive against one seat to each other. And so, you know, at the time, we weren't proposing anything. Most people were proposing at least three percent, so that was part of the reasoning of making sure I can keep to market. We've talked about those salary studies, so this is applied to the pay matrix, and it does help us to keep at market with salary studies that will eventually balloon on us and will have to catch up at a later time, so.
I have a question on the port fund. You said there was eight thousand for the sound study, and there was one point six million originally in it? Is that, so there's one point six minus eight thousand left in that fund?
Eight thousand would be for this year for the second sound study. We spent six thousand, one fifty already on the first sound study.
Okay, so just those two figures are the only thing out of that account?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And also the stabilization money that we had, I'm kind of confused, so we can use that for other things?
So the resolution, when council put that aside, there was a resolution drawn up, and in the resolution, it speaks of the highway expansion project, and during that period of time, if there's a dip that council deemed that it's, you know, our revenues are lower than anticipated, then that's where that came in. But there's a resolution that's very specific to tying it back to still being close to the highway, so I feel, we haven't closed out, so I feel like this is.
But you can use it like for capital?
Expenditures, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Any other questions?
Okay, I'm going to run through a few more sheets, dive into our CIP, and then close this out for any additional questions. I do have a couple of slides on the HOT. I know there's some questions on the Hotel Occupancy Tax or HOT Fund. But first of all, I just wanted to point out in your sheets on what's called your multi-year financial overview, we have gone and done a very conservative percentage increase on twenty-six, and then start to ramp up in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine. As you dive through this particular sheet all the way down to the bottom, this exercise along with the conservative to your sales tax was meant to get you down to the section where you see your change in fund balance. This is also what we talked about, was understanding what we have on the horizon for twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and how that could impact our ad valorem, how it could impact our sales tax, and then ultimately help balance us down in our projections. So. So again, back on looking at these, we go from revenues, and we start to thought also increases in our expenses, just to make sure that it's sustainable in everything that we're doing, knowing that we usually increase at least 3% every year in personnel and services. So again, getting back to the tax rate, your .49 at this particular time is what, until we get those more confirmed rolls, what we have estimated everything on. Our special funds, as mentioned, we've got numerous special funds, so I won't bore you tonight. It is in the proposed budget. Most of these special funds are small. We expense out and allow the directors that have authority on expenditures to be able to do those. Most of them are capital, and expenditures, they're able to do small equipment-type items. The two that I'll point out, this is your public safety fund, so we come to you in January after meeting internally with staff. This is the additional monies that's on the water bill, and this goes towards our first responders as far as additional capital needs. So this is one that I just wanted to kind of point out, and see if you had any questions in particular. Moving on to HOT, so the item that's on the screen right now will show you the different sections of your expense count. So starting at the top, we do have, Council Rasko had asked about the personnel section. We do have 2.5 full-time equivalencies out of this from our public affairs department to manage anywhere from the HOT applications to the advertising, to the webpages. So the personnel in that department are split, a couple of them half, and then our new position for tourism is 100% out of this one. On the expenditure side, there were some questions that were raised tonight as far as the highway signage. So the first highlight that you will see on the $92,700 is including right now, the $42,000 estimated for the highway signs. I think from our last discussion, this would be something that we wanted to see, if we wanted during the budget process to keep in. So at this point, this one is something that I would like to stop and discuss. It would be, based on our last conversation, that the particular hotels would have to contribute at least the panel printing of approximately $550. The $42,000 then would equate to the advertising for one year on the blue panels. At the bottom, we had made changes since the events line item was put into this draft. So this, I believe, is minus the one that's coming back to you on the six, would be increased. Overall, though, this budget is healthy. The revenues are coming in, actually a little bit higher than budgeted for '24. So we feel confident, even with the discussion we'll have on the six, with the 42 in, this is really a council decision, if we keep it or do anything else with it. But it's, it's definitely healthy enough for us to make those decisions this year.
Hey, one, one quick question on that previous slide. It said car allowance, what is that?
So our employees that are commuting for different events, they have car allowances that are built into their salary structure.
Can I ask a couple of questions on that? Because from what I'm reading, on the HOT funds, you can only have up to 30... Okay, I'm sorry, on the car allowances, it should be by mileage, not by an allowance, because it's based on traveling incurred in the promotion and servicing of expenditures, not, okay, travel expenses, office rental, other administrative costs. But it doesn't say, I can't find anywhere that it's just a flat every month, because you don't know that you're going to be traveling every single month, and you, it should be by mileage. Why is that like that?
We could certainly go back and review this. This is something, we've probably been about 18 years, so I would need to review that with our council to see if, if we've missed anything. But it's a personnel package, so administrative costs from when I last reviewed that were, were feasible costs that you could put into those packages.
This is 2018 Texas Hotel and Lodging Association. It also says you can only have 33% of a person's salary, and we have half, 50% for the multimedia producer. Is that correct?
Well, per FTE equivalency, we have .5 for two positions and 100% for one position.
But the multimedia producer comes half out of general and half out of HOT.
Correct.
So that's 50%. And this is as you can only have 33% of their salary.
So that would be 33% of the overall fund balance? Or it, it's probably not equated to your FTE .5, it's probably percentage overall of your fund. So if, if you collect $1 million, it would be 33% of a million, or in our case, $566,033% of that.
It says, for example, administrators who spend 33% of their time overseeing hotel occupancy tax-funded programs should seek funding for no more than 33% of their salary or 33% of other related overhead costs. Am I not reading that right?
We'll have to go, I'll go back with the council and look at it.
Okay, yeah, okay, go ahead, because those are two red flags right away. And also, what's the retirement hospitalization, workers' comp? What's all that?
That would be benefits to the people.
But why is it going through HOT funds? I don't understand that.
Again, that's the full benefit package that goes with their personnel salaries.
So it's not just the personnel salary, it's all of these other things. It's 132 plus, so all of these other things is really...
Correct. And again, we've been doing it for about 18 years, so I can certainly...
I don't know, that's correct. Yeah, I would definitely, we need to revisit that, because I don't, I'm not sure if that's...
And I think most, most of our neighboring cities as well have personnel that's attached to administering these funds. So we can look at it, but it's, from all accounts, it's pretty typical of what I've seen across our neighboring cities as well. All right, so back on the expenses, is there any discussion that we want to stop here? Again, this sign program was in at this point. Any comments from council?
The sign program, I think, is, needs to stay. After we spoke to several of the hotels, they really want to see that commitment from us, and they're okay with paying the $550, the one-time fee for the sign, just to put, pony up some money, just to get that generated and moving. So I definitely want to see this, and this should come out of HOT tax. This is a no-brainer, it signs to market the hotels, so absolutely, yeah.
I agree with Mike, I mean, it's a source of our money. I think, and of all the things, this is a direct advertisement to those hotels, which generate the HOT tax, and it's no testament of how many heads are in beds. So I, I think it'd be a positive thing.
Also, could we use the, the HOT tax to advertise? I think I've said this before, I might have asked if we could use EDC funds, but for, like, restaurants, like if, you know, if somebody was coming to Merlion, they'd probably, you know, spend three, four hours there, and they want to stay the night, you know? I mean, that, that could be a reason to come. I mean, I would, you know, people go to Houston or whatever and get a hotel for the night.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, but it would be Merlions and a thing that's corners, Tuckey's Seafood, and, I mean, if you were advertising...
Right, 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 yeah, I just, I mean, I'm just saying, one of the fine, more fine, not the fast food, but like just the restaurants.
Well, I, I agree, but what would be the number on that? Because for the hotels, it's what, 40 grand? And...
Yeah.
We'd have, you know, we'd have to have a separate sign for all the restaurants that wanted to participate. And that would be another 40 grand for the sign, I guess, and then they'd be putting up their 500 bucks. But it would be interesting to hear from the restaurants as to what their idea is.
I think we should, if we're going to do signage, we should do it all.
Yeah, but you got to remember, the hotels are taxed differently than a restaurant. So that's why they're like this. So we collect more tax for these hoteliers to market them and help them promote their small business, their hotels. So the restaurants, I understand what you're, you're going, and I wish we could, but you cannot take that money from this HOT tax. It would have to come from EDC or another area.
Okay, it says here, signage directing tourists to sites and attractions that are visited frequently by hotel guests in the municipality. It could be, it could be...
That's not, no, it's not restaurants. I mean, restaurants is not technically an attraction, so...
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
So Gail, what do you need tonight?
If council, since this is in your proposed budget, when we go to the next step, you guys are going to be going into public hearings. So tonight would give me direction, if you want this in or out. There's consensus to leave it in, and there's no action needed. If you guys want it out, I need some kind of action.
Can you go again, the, why was the events going up so much again? The budget?
The events, right now, the highlighted that you're seeing, the 138 was from fiscal year '24, actually. And then, what you guys looked at earlier will be substituted. So you're now looking, if eventually it's approved with the barge, you're looking at, that 138 will be substituted with 155.5.
So at this point, the 92 is not in the budget?
It is, it is in your proposed budget.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, okay. So, so is, I guess, I guess we're just looking, we're not looking for a, for a boat, we're just looking for direction. Do we want to keep that in the budget? At this point, just a nod of your head is... Okay, yes.
Okay, moving forward, council, the CIP, I'll briefly go through this. There's not been a lot of changes. However, there are a couple of pretty significant CIP projects I want to discuss with you tonight from our last workshop in June. So that is adding of the community house. So we've talked about, I think, a couple of times, there's been some recommendations of the community house renovation. We've not put that into the CIP and actually put some funds to that. We can certainly start that project off, but I thought it was important to make sure that we get it in, so that we can start and have the funds available to us for construction next year. So that is in your proposed CIP. And then, secondly, the new police station. Again, you guys had approved going in proposal with Randall Scott Architects. We've done that. Chief and I have been working with him on reducing that footprint and reducing the square footage for the needs of just the police department itself. And so we've also reached out to our bond council to look at what potential tax impacts that would look like, and if we wanted to, and again, tonight, we don't have to, to vote on this, but I wanted to start the discussion, since it's on the CIP, to see if that would be earmarked as future bonds. And that would be looking at May 2025 for additional bond election. If that is, ends up being a favorable discussion, put a bullet point on here that obviously, if we move forward, we would need to then put a project on for redesign of this building on the first floor. The slide up right now, again, is, these are certainly not confirmed numbers, but give you an idea of the two big projects. One is the police station we just talked about, but also pool replacement. So later on in the slides, we still have been waiting on our consultant to come back and give us the concept illustrations, as well as the estimated budget cost for pool replacement. So I've taken the liberty of putting in 3 million at this point, that's just a placeholder. The 15 million is what Chief and I have talked with the architect, with the understanding that we have got to get that down to a more reasonable budget. And so we believe we've done that. We're more in the 500 per square foot range at this point with a tilt-wall type construction. So that's brought the cost down considerably, and I think it meets everything that Chief was looking for as far as utilization and square footage. So the estimated new tech, tet, excuse me, debt service would be in the range of 1 to 2 cents if we were to proceed on adding this to our debt service. And again, understanding, because as you can see in our current tax, everything is relying on what your assessed value ends up being and what the interest rate in the market is. So our bond council can only give us, or financial advisor can only give us the best forecasts based on the trends and information that he has at the time. So I put 1 to 2 cents, and again, that would be contingent on those two variables. So this is for discussion purposes only, but as you're looking at your tax rate, we're at 14 cents. This would be somewhere probably lifting that debt rate to 15 cents at the minimum. Any questions? Is this still a favorable project for staff to continue to work towards?
Well, I'm all for a new police station. The way it was packaged with that over there, I'm listening to people, especially people like go to Dairy Queen, who told me not only no, but H no. They'll, the, people have already, they said they've already voted on this. And then you're just, in, in a sense, repackaging it and trying to throw it out there. They're pissed off, so they're not happy at all. So I can tell you right now, I would think a majority would vote no. But I know we need it. See, they don't get to see some of the things we do, they don't know all that. But the way it was originally packaged, they're not happy, they voted it no. And then it kind of like, you know, comes back, so now they're upset about that. So I've tried to explain, hey, we do need a new police station, definitely. But they're not unhappy the way it got packaged at them, and they voted, and they said no. So that's something we're going to have to think about, because I know they need it, so, but...
I agree with that, there's been a lot of upset people, because I feel, I think maybe it might be, not be the right time. I mean, I don't want us to waste any more money on any of this. Maybe if we could push it out a year, I totally get that they need a new police station. I've been through there, I've seen, you know, they're stuffed in there. And, but I, I just, I, I don't know that it's going to pass. At the, the way, the pulse of the people right now, I don't think are ready to vote yes for that. But that's just my opinion.
I've been back there and see, seen how tight it is and how worn a lot of it is. And when you anticipate the growth in the city, we're going to need more police officers, not fewer. I don't see that, that we can avoid having to create additional space for, for our police force in the next three to five years, for sure. And doing so allows the city staff to expand, as it's going to have to do as well. Yes, it was, it was voted as it was packaged earlier, it was voted against. I think if people had understood, had clearly understood what was going on, the comments I've heard is, I'd like to have a new house too, but I can't afford one. Well, you know, if you all of a sudden had triplets, you'd find a way to get a house big enough to accommodate them. Right now, the city's having triplets with our growth rate after the bridge. We have to find a way to do it. One way or the other, we have to find a way to support our police force. Yes, packaged poorly the first time around, not advertised and sold as, as it could have been, and that's, there's a lot of reasons why that happened. State laws are restrictive. But I still feel like that we need to keep pushing for what they're going to need. Keep in mind, if it's approved next May, they'll break ground in May of '26, maybe late summer, August of '26, on an 18-to-two-month, two-year build, 18-month to two-year build. So from the date it's approved as a bond, you're still looking at three to four years. And look at what's coming to the city with the, the road and everything else. It, it's going to be almost untenable if we just kick it down the road for, for, for the next administration here to deal with.
I agree with Rob, and, and it's incumbent upon all of us on council to sell this. I mean, we did a very, we had had a non-existent job the last time. We've got to get our citizens to understand that this is a proven blood zone. We can't ask our PD to come in and park their personal cars for the potential for them to get flooded, to get into a flooded police car, to have a flooded jail. It ain't going to work. And we've got to get, our citizens have got to understand that they're serving the community. And if, if they can't get in here, how can they do anything? And it's not like the water came up to the door, the water came in the door. So, you know, I, I've seen some, some efforts on social media of selling things, and I would hope that, that we could do the same thing. I mean, you know, Jackie, Joe, you've got a lot of energy, and, and I, I would think this would... I mean, you know, Jackie, Joe, you've got a lot of energy, and, and I, I would think this would be right down your alley to, to talk to your folks.
Well, that's interesting you say it that way and word it that way, but I'm not on social media, I get it from other people, but anyway, you can laugh. But the other thing they're saying too, they don't want it near a school. So, you know, I, I get poked at and made fun of by going and talking to people at Dairy Queen and Mario's and Sam's Boat and Merlion and all the different things, because I talk to a lot of citizens, and I can guarantee it, they're not happy, and they're not happy with where you want to locate it, the way it was originally packaged, and then trying to bring it back up. I'm just telling you the truth, you don't have to like me or like it, just the way it is. I know we need a new police station, I've talked to the chief, I've toured it, I know we need it. But they don't want it where you're proposing, and they don't want to pay for it now. And times are tough, I know we need it, but that's why it's going to be a tough situation.
Hey, Joe, I mean, the original police station, and you know where the original one was over by...
Yes, I do.
And now this one is right by Bay Elementary. And this one's going to be over by Ed White. I, I would think, you know, having a police station near the school would, would be a, a positive thing.
I actually have no problem with it, it's the mothers that are talking that they don't want it there.
Well, again, for tonight, this is just discussion only, we'll be coming back. If there, you know, is, is strong consensus that an action wants to be taken to remove this from our CIP. To Rob's point, I think there's a very long lead time. We are trying to get some accreditation in our department, most of the departments around us are already accredited. And some of the issues that we have in our evidence room and such is kind of hindering that as well. So I think as far as staff is concerned, this is a, is a high priority, given the lead time, that we probably would not be in this building at least three years. We do have and can come back at a later time if council's still open to this, but we do have some debt that will be rolling off. So that will affect our long-term look at what our debt service would be. So we can look at that in more detail, so that, that is a relief that will be coming on some of our debt service here in the future.
Are these two projects on the, on the election ballot, will they be separated, or will they be grouped?
No, they'll, it would be separate, each would have its own proposition.
Can you just clarify when the tax increase would take place if it's voted, approved?
So I know it's kind of hard to see on this one, let's see if it's even showing, I don't think it is. On the far right, over there in the green column, you'll, you'll start to see, so the initial year that the, the GEO bonds are actually closed and issued, you're, you're basically paying a low payment, and then it ramps up to a moderate, and it sustains that whole, probably eighteen-year period. And then the last two payments usually end up being a little bit different, higher or lower than the middle payment. So there's a whole schedule to each one of our debt services, and so we look at what's coming on, what's coming off. And then, Mike, all of those payments are added together, and that's what comes up with the fourteen cents that you're approving. So that's what we call our debt service. The fifteen cents is looking over there, kind of at your right-hand column, and it goes down and looks at all of the added payments that these new GEO bonds would actually add to the debt service.
Start paying additional.
So that first year, so...
Twenty-twenty-five or twenty-six?
Mike, I don't know if you want to kind of clarify, when we've done some of those issuances, that first payment's very soft, but we do get some impact.
I just want to know when the public's, or the residents would feel, you know, if any, but...
So the, if, if the debt was sold in the spring of twenty-five, then in the twenty-six, calendar year twenty-six is when the citizens would be impacted potentially on the debt rate. And the debt schedule, if y'all wanted to see it, is on page one twenty-four? One twenty-two, so again, kind of goes with what you're pointing out there, Gail.
And the plan on this would be to bring our financial advisor back, we'll get into this a little bit more. We're understanding from our consultant on the pool, the concepts should be ready sometime in August, I believe, yes. And so probably at the August twentieth meeting, you'll get the 3D renderings of a couple of the concepts for the pool, what the cost estimates are, so we can kind of tackle some of these projects again and talk about it in more detail. But I did want to touch on it, it is on your proposed CIP for these costs, and I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that. Your current fiscal year overall in the twenty-five column is for twenty-four million, two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars. You can see the bulk of that is in our streets, so as we get into that, I'll show you the, the cost drivers on those projects. Overall, our comprehensive view of our CIP is looking into the future and trying to make sure if there's any significant projects coming up, we are able to financially plan for those the best that we can. Putting them on the CIP schedule allows us not only to look at fiscal year twenty-five, but into the future. So overall, we are looking at the current proposed projects of over a hundred and twenty-one million over the five-year lookout period. So focusing on streets, the projects that we discussed prior that are in are the North Meyer reconstruction. So we did apply for Harris County Precinct Two partnership grant, and we're, I notified that they will be awarding us fifty percent of the design and engineering around, and, and not to exceed five hundred thousand. Again, we'll move into construction, the overall from the city's estimate is about eight million dollars, and that would be cutting that in half, hopefully, so we'd only be taking four million. And this is a project that would be coming out of our certificates of obligation that we issued this year. A new project that is on this program is the Asphalt Street Reconstruction Group One. What that is, is a group of streets that staff looked at, and we wanted to look at everything that we could put into those certificates of obligation, but that's... So what we also take into revenues is sanitation franchise fee. That's added on to our waste management, or whoever our provider is. And those monies have always been set aside for capital, capital meaning the wear and tear of those large trucks on our streets. So looking at some streets that we were originally posing as a concrete reconstruction, a lot of the questions came up, there's not a lot of traffic on those. We went back and have made a new classification that we're classifying as rural, that would make more sense to go back in asphalt instead of concrete, thus bringing that down a little bit. But primarily, we would propose what the franchise fee was originally put in place with is, if the large trucks are going to be those asphalt streets tearing them apart, the money is coming into capital. So this Asphalt Street Reconstruction Group would be utilizing those funds. So this project, with this year's contribution, we're proposing a little over two million dollars to do all of those streets. And we do, we will have sufficient funds, including fiscal year twenty-five, to do that. From there, Third Street is a concrete proposal, and, and that would be proposed coming out of our certificate of obligation. This is a snippet of a program that you have in full in your binders tonight. We've been talking about our AI program and how we are going to annually go through and do assessments on every one of the city's streets. So we've taken liberty of, unfortunately, killing a tree, and, and you can see every street and what those gradings index are for each one of the streets. From there, we're going to look at this program every year, look at it with our annual budget to see what we can do as far as preventive maintenance, if they're in great condition. But obviously, with some of the streets that we presented to you, they're in bad condition, so we need to do reconstructions on those. But this program, along with our AI program, will help us in the future to kind of make those assessments, hopefully catch repairs sooner, which will hopefully drive down some of the costs as well. So the pavement management will have all the streets, this is not your CIP, but it helps us look at it annually. Your CIP will then transfer those to the lookout of the five-year for the CIP. So running through these, again, we have our North Meyer reconstruction, that's in grant and in motion. The Asphalt Street Reconstruction would be utilizing our franchise fees. And then Third Street would also take our certificates of obligation and look at doing a concrete reconstruction on this project. On the water projects, we just have a couple this year that we're proposing, and again, we've gone over this one. The interconnect on Old One Forty-Six is not been completely costed out, so we've done the, the work, but we haven't actually bid this out. So the six-twenty-two is for completing a water interconnect. The bottom there, you see Seaside, so this is a proposal that you've already approved, and this is for the replacement in Seaside of the water lines. And this is just the aerial photos of these two projects. For your wastewater, we have station improvements on Number Five. We have the generator that is coming in, hopefully from HMGP, the Main Street Plant Demolish Project, and the Pine Gully Force Main. For your facilities, and again, if, I know this is kind of hard to see, but you have a full tabloid size in your binder as well behind Three. You can see the full CIP, but this is a snippet from the facility. So as we discussed tonight, at the bottom, working up, we have the Community House remodel, and this would be, right now, in your proposed budget, coming out of reserves. The police station, we've marked as future bonds. And then at the very top, we've talked with the EDC about a planned project for signage. So they're amenable to still being a funding partner on a signage program. Parks, again, the highlight indicates that we've got more discussion, but it's in the CIP, slotted for the three million. And then from there, we are going to go into our next city council meeting, in which a lot of these items will be confirmed or denied. But they're ARPA-funded projects, so we've talked about that, you have some amendments coming up. And we'll talk about them in more detail next week. But at the very bottom, Brummerhop restroom upgrade, and then we've added the pickleball courts, and we're noting those as ARPA funds. Again, all those contracts will be before you next week, and we'll be talking about the Hester Pedestrian Bridge, which is what we had talked about prior, that one is not going to be able to get done in time for the ARPA fund, so this designation has changed. So this is moving your ARPA funds over. And again, this is just to note, on the Pelican Bay area, we've got a concept design result that's pending back to council in August. Our sidewalk program is in the budget right now, so your hundred thousand dollars for the second year to continue the sidewalk replacement program is in there. So we, the two proposed areas that we'll be focusing on is Seabrook Island and Lake Point Forest. And then we also have a new project that we've noticed is a need over on Repstorff. So if you're familiar with the Beacon area, there's a void of no sidewalk from Beacon all the way up to the light. And so we've got the nice sidewalk on that side at the Meyer. So this would be, the twenty-seven thousand would be to complete that sidewalk segment on that side of Repstorff. Okay, so next steps, we'll be coming back to you for proposed tax rate in a public hearing. And that would be if there's no further questions or any significant changes that council has tonight on the proposed budget.
Any questions, council? Thank you, Gail. Okay, we'll adjourn the workshop session and enter into regular city council session again. Five-point-oh routine business, five-point-one, establish future meeting dates and agenda items.
Mayor and council, your next meeting is scheduled for five PM. It's a joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission next Tuesday, August sixth, followed by your regular council meeting, which will take place immediately following. It's scheduled for five-thirty PM next Tuesday.
Good.
Five-thirty, five o'clock, right. So five o'clock for the special joint meeting, five-thirty for the regular meeting.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
When's our next meeting? Okay, do I have a motion?
Next Tuesday.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seven-twenty-one.